You're with us tonight. Hopefully you're watching us either on Facebook or you're watching us on TV six, or you're watching us on Zoom. All those options are available to you. It's good that you are here tonight to share in the town's business and how your council conducts that business itself. Okay. Bo, will you provide us an introduction for this evening's meeting, please?
Yeah, yes, me glad to. Let's pray. God our Father, we give you thanks for this day. As wet and bloody as it may be, we ask your providence in keeping those folks that might otherwise be in harms way out of harms way due to rains and flooding. We give you thanks especially during this month of Thanksgiving for all your many blessings. Help us to truly be mindful of the many blessings that you give to us each and every day. And also keep us mindful of those who do not have enough to eat, do not have a warm and dry place to stay. And who do not have friends and most of all, who do not have your love in their life because they haven't asked for it. We ask your blessings upon this meeting, guide, the council, guide staff in the ways that they should go. And then following this meeting, we ask your continued blessings upon each of us, for it's in your holy name we pray.
Thank you, Bo. Let's see, our, excuse me, our roll call for this evening, introducing you to our council members. And if your council members indicate that you're here, even though we see you. Mr. Smitherman.
Good evening.
Ms. Welch.
Good evening.
Ms. Hunt.
Happy Thursday.
Ms. Foster.
Here, good evening.
Dr. Sadler.
Hello.
And Mr. Franklin, I don't see you on our screen yet. I'm assuming that you're probably running a little bit late. I'm sure you have cow issues or field issues or something that's going on on your farm with all this raining, but I'm sure you'll be with us shortly. Ms. Walker, have there been any changes or additions to our agenda since you sent it up?
I'm sorry. No, I forgot to unmute myself. No, there haven't been any changes.
Very good. Council members, any additions you would like to make? If not, want to entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening? Mr. Smitherman makes the motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Well, you can't do that anymore, Mike. Old habits, going back to them. Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Welcome, Mr. Franklin. We're approving the agenda. Have you had a chance to take a look at it, Fred?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, everybody.
Sorry, these six o'clock meetings kill me, especially when I give blood after work. So I apologize for being late.
Not a problem. You didn't miss anything. The only thing since you missed was was Mr. House invocation. But he can give you a repeat of that in private if you wish.
Sorry.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And these are items that historically or traditionally come before the town council. There are items like our minutes and our financial reports. All of us received these documents well in advance of this meeting. We've had a chance to take a look at them. We approve them as a group. However, any council member can ask that any single item be removed for individual consideration. With that, council members, what's your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Ms. Welch makes the motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the second. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Mr. Smitherman.
I approve.
Ms. Welch.
Approve.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin. Very good. The mayor's aye, and that is unanimous. PJ Stringer.
Yes, sir.
How are you tonight?
Well, we've dried out from today, so it's a we made it home, so that's a good thing.
That's a good thing. What do you have to share with us?
Well, first of all, I got to introduce somebody who wanted to participate in the Zoom meeting with us tonight, so I want to let all the council member and the town staff meet my son Eli.
Hi.
Hi, Eli.
Eli.
Eli said he's never participated in a Zoom meeting, so with all this remote learning, we figured we'd let him give him, give him a shot tonight, so.
Very good. Glad you're with us, Eli.
All right. So Hank, you want to pull up the stats that I have? There you go. All right. All right. So pull up the, can you pull up the spreadsheet first?
Sure.
Our total calls for service for October were 577, so we were down just a little bit. 261 security checks. Forty-nine forty-nine traffic violations, traffic stops, and seventeen alarms. Whether our priority response time of being five minutes, and again, that's code one, that's blue lights and sirens. If you'll switch back over Hank to the calls for service report, just a couple of quick things. You'll notice the, we did have another rash of break-ins out in the Poff Town area. These, these things kind of come random. Seems like they'll make their way through Clemmons and then through Lewisville and like a big circle. That was really the only thing significant that stood out for the, for the month of October. But I did have a couple of little tips that I'd like to share with the citizens and with the council about the increased online shopping that we're gonna see. Just a quick reminder to the citizens, try to take precautions. You're gonna see now the time of year with everybody buying through Amazon and different online shopping packages. It's a very crucial time of the year where, where these what we call porch pirates, they, they're staking out the neighborhoods and, and they're waiting for packages to be left visible on the porch, so. I just want to encourage everybody, take precautions, try to look out for your neighbors, have it delivered to somebody that's home, create a lockbox that somebody can put a package in. There's, all these websites have instructions that you can leave for the driver, so I would try to utilize that. Just try not to leave these packages visible on the, on the porches because people that are looking to steal, they're gonna look for that easy target, so let's not make it easy for them.
Thank you, PJ. Council members, any questions? Very good. PJ, are you in for the night?
I hope so.
Well, we hope so too. And tell your grandson that it was good, good of him to be here with us tonight.
This is my son. That's not my grandson.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, let's, let's don't wish it away for me, okay?
You know, it's that bald head, PJ. When you lose your hair, people start, people start making assumptions there, but.
I did, I did want to tell Ryan and David Matthews today, we appreciate their help with getting barricades and cones setting out for these flooded areas. These guys are, are very good to work with and a lot quicker than DOT, and we really appreciate their help.
Thank you, PJ. Stay safe, please.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Smitherman. Oh, that was a wave, right? Goodbye.
That was a wave to PJ. Good night. Good night. Take care, buddy.
Stacy, if you would put up, please, our contact information for this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, this will be the first of two public forums we have for our meetings. This is your opportunity to share your thoughts and share your concerns with the council. Generally, it's our opportunity to listen to you. We don't engage in debate. That's, that's for obviously another time. This is when we can hear from you and listen to your concerns. You'll see the webinar number if you want to put that into your browser, or you can just call on the telephone line and we'll bring you in that way. We'll give it a couple of seconds here for people to, to jot that number down or use that webinar number. You can also go to louisvilleency.net and you can click on Residence Event Calendar, and there will be a link on today, the 11th, to this town meeting. Hank, do we have anybody in our queue?
Yes, we have one, Mr. Jeff Raven.
Mr. Raven, welcome.
Mr. Raven, you need to unmute your mic.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Jeff Raven, 212 Fernham Place, Louisville. So I got a question for the council. The Tuesday afternoon of this week, just two days ago, there was a town of Louisville truck, white truck, came down my street. I live on a dead end cul-de-sac street. Two gentlemen were in the truck. The service lights of the truck were on and they were blinking. They drove around five miles an hour, took them about a full two or three minutes to come down my street and drive back, and it's only about 100, 125 yard long, the whole street. My question is, who are those gentlemen and what were they doing?
Well, Mr., we'll briefly answer your question, Mr. Raven. You probably saw a couple of our maintenance staff, and from time to time, they do go through our neighborhoods. Number one, they check for road conditions. Number two, they are trying to respond to residents' concerns. Number three, they may have been down there for a, a check of our stormwater facilities. It's not, it's not uncommon. In fact, we should raise our hands and applaud them that they're visible to our community. Anytime you wish to stop their truck and ask them what they're doing, please feel free to do that. That'll be Mr. Moser and Mr. Let's see, I guess it'll be David and Ryan, right? Yes, it'd be David and Ryan. You'll find them most affable and willing to answer any of your questions.
Thank you for the response.
Very good. Anybody else, Hank?
No, sir. No more.
Very good. Okay. Again, ladies and gentlemen, at the end of this meeting, we'll put up that slide again, and you'll have an opportunity to share your thoughts with the council. That'll be the second opportunity during our second public forum. Alrighty. We have a public hearing tonight, and this is a public hearing on our pedestrian connection overlay. Stacy, do you want to do our, our lead into it, please?
Um, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay. So we've, I briefed you on this a couple of different times. And tonight is, is the night that has been scheduled for the public hearing. The ad was run in the newspaper two consecutive, two consecutive weeks by law. That's what we're required to do. Notifying the residents of Louisville and the public of tonight's public hearing. So the first one is an amendment to the UDO, and the section is the pedestrian connections overlay district. This is not, for, for public sake, this is not a specific area of town where this would apply. This specific, particular overlay applies to the entire town of Louisville, and where it comes into play is if if there's a part, a development that comes along a street where a sidewalk or some sort of pedestrian connection is called for in our greenway and pedestrian connections plan, then this particular section of our ordinance applies. So what they're required to do is either build a sidewalk, connect greenway, that sort of thing. There are certain areas where it's not always feasible for a sidewalk to be built. It may be very harsh topography conditions, or it might be very, very costly because of stream crossings. It may be in a certain area where it's almost impossible to meet ADA requirements. You know, all of our sidewalks have to be built to ADA requirements, and so it, you know, there's, there's a couple of different things. Another one of those may be that there might be, if it's on an NC DOT state road, there already might be a project in the plan that already calls for a sidewalk there. So in those instances, there are two things. They can either move forward and go ahead and build the sidewalk or the greenway, or they could ask for a waiver. And if they have specific, those, one of those categories, like I mentioned, and they meet that, then the planning board is allowed to give them a waiver for building that sidewalk. Well, if the waiver is given, then they have the option of either paying a fee in lieu of that cost of construction for that sidewalk, or they can go and try to do and something different. We call it alternative compliance. So where the frontage would be identified, they would get the waiver, and then they make the choice to move forward. So what this, what this text amendment does is add in that alternative, alternative compliance to give them a different outlet, if you will, if the cost of construction for that specific sidewalk is going to be, you know, unfeasible for their project, or, you know, those other things that I mentioned, then this gives them a different way to still provide the town within their development, some sort of pedestrian connection. And so what this alternative compliance does is what they would do is they would go and they would come up with some other type of plan, a different sidewalk plan, a different greenway plan, something like that, and they would bring that to the planning board, and then the planning board has a discretion to either say, yes, this proposed alternative meets and fulfills the intent of the pedestrian connection overlay, or it doesn't, so they need to, to pay the fee in lieu of construction. Now, one thing that doesn't, that's not a change, is that fee in lieu of construction. What the town would do with that fee is, is once it's collected, then it would be up for the town council to decide how that money would be used. Either it's a rehabilitation of, of an existing sidewalk, we might want to add money to it to build a new sidewalk, something like that. It would be up to the council to decide. Or it could be used for, say, for instance, it was one of those cases where NC DOT already has a plan to build a sidewalk. Well, nine times out of 10, the town matches funds for that project. That money could be used in that outlet as well, that beginning, and that would be up to the town council. So that in a nutshell is what this text amendment is. It, it gives a different alternative. An alternative from just simply paying the fee in lieu of, it gives the developer or property owner or whoever may be doing a project, a different form to meet the intent of the pedestrian connections overlay. And then, and then it simply just is a few cleanup items and that sort of thing. But I will be happy to, to take any questions that you have in regards to this text amendment.
Council members?
I've got a question quickly.
Yes, sir.
A couple of examples. Does this apply to like Ashley Forest where the little cul-de-sac was built? Our requirements require a sidewalk curb. Everything leading into that little cul-de-sac did not have sidewalks. And I think the last one was Kelwyn Drive. Is, is, does this have anything to do with that?
That is a little bit different. Those areas are, you know, like small, small streets like that that are existing are generally not included in the greenway pedestrian connections plan. This applies to, say, for instance, the property, the development that was approved along Louisville Clemmons Road earlier this summer, that, that's a project that this applied to. And that is a project where NC DOT already has a plan, so, so they will be paying that fee in lieu of sidewalk for, for that. It applies there. Another one that this applied to was Avondale, that, that development along Shalford Road. It's now called Avalon, the, the development changed its names, but that, this applied to them because Shalford Road is one of those roads in the greenway and pedestrian connections plan that requires sidewalks, so. So they are installing sidewalk along Shalford Road because the, the conditions were, allowed them to do so.
Now, again, how would this impact Louisville Middle School and Robin Hood Road, back at Louisville Road?
When the school site, when the school development was approved, this was not, obviously, this development, this UDO text amendment wasn't before us at that time. We have been talking about it for a very long time, but if my memory serves me correctly, they, they got the waiver, so they are instructed to pay the, the fee in lieu of the sidewalk along Robin Hood. Or if the town chooses, they could, if, if the text amendment passes tonight, they could come back with us to some alternative plan. You know, maybe a greenway through the property in hopes to connect to a neighborhood or something like that. If, if the planning board would approve that, some sort of alternative compliance that they could do.
Thanks. Thank you, Stacy. That gives me a good idea of how it will apply.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Stacy?
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Stacy.
Hey, Jen.
Thanks for your work on this. Couple of questions. Number one, I assume this applies to the town of Louisville as a developer as well.
Yes, it does.
And for people to know, we, we do have a copy of the pedestrian and greenway plan on.
Susan Hatchell, yeah, pedestrian, greenway connections. It was done in 2011. I get the name wrong sometimes, but.
That's it. But it's on the website.
Yes.
For council members to just, just know. And so I'm reading the whereas's. I want to make sure I'm clear because, yeah, to, to, to Mr. Franklin's point, yeah, this originated back when we were having discussions with the school, the school board. So back in January, planning board members had some feedback, looked for some feedback from the new council, and we gave them some information at, at the March meeting. So they've held their public hearing and done all of that. It applies to the town of Louisville. Two, two small little points I want to make sure I'm clear about. So the planning board will make a determination and approve the waiver. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, and that, that is existing. That doesn't change.
Right.
One thing that did change was, if you'll see in the text, there's some strike through that talks about the, and, and at that time of the request, the planning board will decide where those monies are used. We're taking that out because it's not for the planning board to decide. That would be for council to decide how that money would be used.
Right, right. But count, but planning board, I suspect, might have some suggestions along with parks and rec, et cetera. So those things will come into consideration, but council will make the final determination.
Yes, ma'am.
New language. Okay. And then finally, we've, we've mentioned many, many times about the greenway and pedestrian plan being accepted and not adopted. And since this ordinance ties directly back to this, what, what do you anticipate, Stacy? We've talked about it for a long time in terms of codifying that at the next level? Do you see it as happening with the comp plan, or what are your thoughts at this point in time?
Well, this, this, the pedestrian connections overlay was put into the ordinance prior to me being employed by the town. But from what I can gather, the looks of this pedestrian connection overlay is simply to give that document teeth, if you will. Being accepted, not adopted, it's called for in the ordinance, and so if the ordinance says if your project is along one of these roads, then this is what you have to do. I think moving forward, it, it's always good to have a plan like that that can be a recommendation for us. But one thing that I would be hopeful is, is as we move forward, integrating some of that into our new comprehensive plan, and then also from there, if you remember, the whole point of doing the comprehensive plan first was to get our complete idea of how we want our town to grow and what our vision of our town is, and then develop the regulations in order to back that up to make sure those regulations are, are I don't want to say forcing the hand, if you will, but, but making sure we have regulations in place for the outcome of the town that we want. And so I, I think in the meantime, the pedestrian connections overlay gives that document teeth, even though it's just accepted, not adopted. But in, in the near future, hopefully, when we do those, you know, other projects come along, then it would be, become even more so requirements, if you will.
Okay. So last, last process question. So when you're doing your staff report with developments coming forward in the future, you'll use the pedestrian and greenway plan as a tick mark to see if certain things are in compliance, and then this would kick in to hold the developer accountable for their options, alternative compliance, otherwise. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bo, a quick question. Can we legally hold somebody to a document that hasn't been officially adopted by the town?
As, as Stacy had kind of explained, if that were a standalone document, we could not simply point to pedestrian and greenway plan and say, you have to follow this, any more than we could look just independently to the comprehensive plan and say, hey, Mr. Developer, comprehensive plan says this, you have to do this. But in this case, similar to when we looked at a project recently where the, where the UDO pointed to some comprehensive plan provisions, then while the comprehensive plan provisions themselves don't get quite the force of law, the UDO as the force of law incorporates them and so gives them, as Stacy put it, the teeth that they, that they need in order for enforceability. So in this case, with a pedestrian connections overlay, that makes specific reference to another document, that gives it to, to that extent, the force of law. Now, that doesn't mean that every provision of the pedestrians and Greenway Connections Plan, you can't point to every provision of that. But I think the portion of it that is kind of giving teeth here is the map section of it that tells you where those have to occur. So in this, to that extent, it now has, it would, well, it does now presently have the force of law, force of ordinance.
A question for council. Since that document was developed almost a decade ago, in fact, a decade ago, should we not be looking at updating it? Because I suspect there are some areas that have been identified for potential greenways or pedestrian ways that are no longer applicable. Or there may be some new areas that we want to identify in that map, because it seems to me we've got a, we have a document that may need a little review. Thoughts?
Mike, I'm, this is Melissa. I'm in agreement with updating the document. Is that going to be at all part of this entire update, Stacy, that we're doing with the comp plan and all of that? That document going to be part of that?
Well, a lot of times, there's, there's grant and funding out there that, that you can get for pedestrian plans and like bicycle plans and, and stuff like that through our MPO and through NC DOT, that sort of thing. I don't necessarily think that there would be specific regulation or you know, it, it would, that the comprehensive plan would get that detailed as far as, as detailed as this plan is, specifically calling out roads or areas of town where we would want sidewalks or greenways. You know, but I certainly think it, it could be a project in the future, even in the near future, that, you know, if, if council so chose, we could look at trying to find. I know Hank knows a lot of different avenues for funding to update something like that.
Thank you.
Can we figure out how to put that in a pile that it, it doesn't get taken out with the trash and gets kept on our agenda to look at? I see Stacy nodding, so very good. It's.
Everybody, the MPO wants the state of North Carolina and the federal government are in a position to start issuing grant funds again. You guys are probably familiar with, it comes around and it gets on your agenda every now and then, the bicycle and pedestrian grant opportunities. That's exactly the, the, the type of grant funding that's available for it, and that thing comes probably, if not annually, every other year. So it's, it's quite regular. We can apply for those funds through the MPO.
Great. Thank you, everybody.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sounds like this would be one thing we ought to talk about at our retreat in January.
Well, I think I saw, I saw our manager's hand moving, and I'm assuming that's his list for our, for our, for our retreat.
Yeah, I may not come up with anything else, but at least I got one on the list now.
Very good. You're off the hook. Ladies and gentlemen, any more questions for Stacy? Okay. This is a public hearing, and this is a public hearing on the ordinance 2020049. The pedestrian connections overlay is, go ahead and put up our, our, there it is. This, if you would like to make comment on this, here again is how you can, can do that. You can, probably the easiest way to get to our Zoom is to go to louisvilleency.net, click on Residence, click on Event Calendar, and go to November 11th, and you'll see a link to this meeting.
Yes, November 12th, Mayor.
November 12th, excuse me. Okay. Well, no wonder I've been running late all day. So ladies and gentlemen, you can also call in on the telephone right there, and that is 646-558-8656. We'll leave it up for a couple of minutes. Some, I neglected at the very beginning of the meeting to say that we would have a public hearing for community comment tonight, so my apologies for, for that. Hank, do we have anybody in the queue?
No, we don't.
Okay. Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, you can, we will take this up. take this up again for consideration at our December third meeting. If you wish to wait, make written comments, please submit those in the next 24 hours to town clerk at Lewisville N C dot net, town clerk at Lewisville N C dot net, and those comments will be part of the record.
Mayor, if I could make one thing about access.
Yes, sir.
We, last week, we talked about the new use of Facebook to create Facebook events. That is already started. So a Facebook event has been created for each meeting, including this meeting. Those that are going to Facebook can find those events and there is a clickable link in the event that will take you to this meeting as well.
Excellent. Uh, Mrs. Walker, we had you later on in the agenda, but if you want to go ahead and talk about how residents can find the agenda packets. Um, ladies and gentlemen, at, at briefings, we get a, a very comprehensive packet of information that are, that are, explain the items that are going to be coming before us. If you would like those, uh, Ms. Walker is going to tell you now how to get them.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. Access is the same way, everyone. Um, I send out the agenda early, which is usually on a Tuesday. There's no supporting information with it. However, um, once I receive all of the backup information, I then send out a packet of that information, usually Wednesday afternoon. It is placed on our website and if you will go to our website under, um, government, you will see that you have an option to look at agendas and minutes. When you click on agendas, the full package of information will be there on any supporting data that we have. Um, if the information that you seek is not there, you always can call me and I can try to send that to you if I have it. So that's there for every council meeting on the second Thursday of the month. Uh, generally, we try to get information at the, uh, for the, uh, briefing up uh, the same way. It's not always available to me or to you guys until very, very late, so it may not be there. And we may share it, uh, differently. Thank you, whoever did that.
Yes, that's why, that's what, uh, Ms. Walker is referring to, the page. You can get in there and see the, um, agenda file. And then the minutes you can see a little lower down there as they get approved and she gets the opportunity to upload them. The minutes from the meeting will be populated onto this as well for older and then the agendas are there. Those are full copies of the agenda for whatever council has.
And just a, a note, um, the policy of council is that we do not post the minutes until after the minutes have been approved because we turn, it turns out that we may have corrections to them and we don't want you to get misled by something that might not be correct.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Thank you.
Hank, is there anybody else in our queue?
No, sir, there's not.
Very good. Yes, I'm sorry.
Had a comment.
Yes, sir, Bo.
Ms. Foster had a comment.
I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Foster.
Thank you, Mr. How. Uh, I wanted to go back to what, um, Mr. Perkins was saying.
Just let me, let me just, let me just hold you for just a second because we, we still on our public hearing. Let me come out of that and then you can, we can do and have some, some council discussion. Um, if there are, if there's nobody else left in the queue, then, uh, we will close this public hearing and recognize Ms. Foster.
Thank you. So, um. Mr. Perkins, a few minutes ago, you were referencing the Facebook me, you were referencing the December third meeting that the mayor referenced, which would be when we would be voting on this particular public hearing item, correct?
I was not, I was talking about Facebook events.
Okay, I just, I, I wanted to be, be clear because I think our policy indicates that we're not going to have Facebook live at briefings. It's just going to be at regular meetings, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, so, so.
What I was referring to earlier was specifically the Facebook events that are being created for the meetings.
Okay, so for the next, for what, for the meeting, when the public would be watching for the vote, December 3rd, that would not be on Facebook Live.
That's correct. If that's a briefing, that would not.
I just want to make sure that's clear to the public. Okay, thank you.
And as a follow-up on that, we will be on channel six though, on Feb, on, uh, December 3rd, correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, folks. Ladies and gentlemen, the next item on our agenda is also a public hearing. Um, we, we still want to have a staff presentation by Stacy, but what I'd like for us to consider is, I believe appropriately so, last meeting, Dr. Sadler suggested that the residents who would be impacted by a change in the downtown overlay, uh, be notified so that they could, they could understand what was going on and they could participate in the public hearing should they wish to. Uh, we, we were attempting to do that and had it all set, ready to go. And then Stacy told we're why wisely realized that yesterday was a holiday and that these letters may not get delivered in time with enough notice for people to participate. So while we'll have a staff presentation tonight, we will open the public hearing, but we will continue it. Mrs. Walker, I believe we're going to continue it until our December 10th meeting? That's correct. Very good. Okay, so with that, Stacy, if you want to go ahead and give us a presentation on this.
Okay, um, as we talked about last week, um, our downtown overlay, um, is, is the way that it's referenced in the ordinance and the way that it's referenced in the Louisville comprehensive plan is, is not completely clear. Um, currently it talks about from one point of downtown to another. Um, it talks about how many acres that it would encompass and then it, and it refers you to the preferred land use map and the Louisville comprehensive plan. But once you get to that plan, there is not a definitive, um, portion of the legend that technically says this is the downtown overlay. Um, this is the core area and this is the gateway area. And so as a planning board, that was one of the things that we wanted to strive to do was to, to add more clarity to our ordinance when it, when it comes to our downtown. So, um, there, there's a clear rule to what properties are included, um, in the downtown area, um, and then more moreover, how are the ones in the downtown core area and then what are included in the downtown gateway area? Um, and so what this does is it, um, updates the definitions in order for us to adopt a specific map. Um, this map will be added to our appendix section. It will be exhibit five of the appendix section of the unified development ordinance. Um, and so if someone comes in and, and we're trying to decide, is it in or is it out? We, there's a clear, yes, it is, or, or no, it is not. And therefore, is it in the core area or is it in the gateway area? Um, so, so you can see on your screen, the updated, um, definitions. And instead of pointing you to that preferred land use map, it's, it's now going to point you to, um, the area in the appendix, e- exhibit five for the Louisville downtown overlay map specifically showing those, those things. Um, some of this is some cleanup items. Um, again, there's, there was a definition section. What we're doing is we're taking those out of the interior of, of the ordinance and just placing those solely in the definitions chapter of the ordinance that was recommended to us um, in our U D O assessment as, as a cleanup item, something to do for our ordinance moving forward. Um, and then again, it, it updates it to, for you to go to exhibit five in the appendix section and then, and then updates. I didn't put all the language in here because none of that language changes. All I did was, um, put the headings for each of those uh, areas in the ordinance, in the downtown overlay in, in order for it to update the numbering because, um, the numbering is a little bit different when you take out the definitions. Um, so same goes for, um, the overlay section of the ordinance, updates that. And then lastly, in the appendix, it actually adds exhibit five as the Louisville downtown overlay district map. Um, so now I will move over to, um, the map itself. This, this is not specifically the map that will be, um, adopted. We will, we will talk about that once it's continued. I'll have that for you. But for presentation purposes, I wanted you to see on this map, the purple area is where the downtown core area is. The green area will be considered the downtown gateway area. Um, that's, that's along Williams Road, um, over at four 21. And then, um, we've overlaid the gate, the great wagon road. So you can see um, exactly where that is designed to go downtown just for sake of, um, the location of it. And then the properties that you see in yellow, um, we talked about this last week as well. Those properties, um, are ones that the planning board felt, um, did not really need to be in the downtown overlay anymore. Um, by ordinance in 1995, um, ordinance 1995 zero zero five, um, those properties were added to the downtown overlay. Um, but again, the, the planning board felt that, um, they no longer needed to be. Um, a lot of them are um, single family homes that are very well established homes. You can see, um, at the end of Linda Drive here, um, in the cul-de-sac area. You know, those are homes that, that front Linda Drive. They would not be fronting the, the great wagon road. Um, so, so again, it was, what this would do would, would be taking those out. Um, now, letters have been sent out to those property owners. As Mayor Horn spoke, um, I was afraid that with the mail not running yesterday, with it being a holiday, I didn't want us to have this public hearing and then somebody might not even get their letter till tomorrow or, you know, Saturday, you know, I'm not, I'm not really sure when they might get it. Um, and so I just, I talked to them and, and I felt it would be best, um, to give residents an opportunity um, to call me with questions, um, to let me know if they had any concerns with what was going to be happening. I wanted to, a- all the residents that this would affect, um, especially the, the parcels in yellow, for them to be aware of exactly what was happening. So they would understand, um, as Dr. Sadler mentioned, um, e- exactly what would be, what this meant for their property. Um, so if you have any questions, uh, that, that's just the downtown overlay with those, um, the yellow properties taken off, the, the ones that would not, no longer be included. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Stacy? Ms. Foster.
Yes, thank you, Stacy. And I really appreciate your, you know, conscientiousness and thinking through, through some things as it relates to the residents perspective. Thank you for that.
I have Dr. Sadler to thank for that. I, I won't take the credit for that, but, um, I do want to give a lot of credit to my, to my planning board. I call them my planning board. I, I feel like they're my team. But, um, to the planning board in general, I mean, it's, it's been a, it's been, um, a good experience with them. We, I've said this before, when, when all this started, we, um, I, I plotted out a big map and we got around a table with highlighters and had a lot of great discussion and everything. Um, and then also to Joseph Sloop, he is the G I O for Forsyth County. He's the director of map Forsyth. But he's also, uh, lives in Louisville and is a, a planning board member. So he helped, um, get the map together and, and, um, get a lot of the shape files and everything together so that we could have this great map that we have. So kudos to the planning board for this.
Always. Um, so, so my question is, so you, the letters that you were referencing were sent out to the homes or the, the residents, the property owners outlined in yellow.
Yes.
What, what else has gone out per our requirements to anyone else in the, the area or just the, the, um?
It's just the ones in yellow. Those are the ones that are changing. Um, with, uh, the text amendment, with it being a U D O amendment, we didn't send, what we're required to do by law is run ads in the newspaper and we have done that. Same with the, um, previous text amendment that we talked about tonight, but, um, the ads have run in the newspaper for this.
Any questions for Stacy? Stacy, could you go back real quickly to the map with the yellow parcels on it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
There you go.
The, uh, there are two parcels that are on Louisville Vienna Road. Um, I believe right there, we, where you turn on to Lowe's Foods Drive.
Jennings Road.
Or Jennings Road, I'm sorry, yeah. And would you share with us, uh, those seem to me to be likely candidates for part of the downtown core? Um, I, I mean, I guess generally speaking, you look at roadways or certain physical features that terminate a particular district. And can you share with us or share with me certainly, maybe the council, the reasoning for removing those from the downtown core?
I think what the, what the planning board, um, felt was the way that the downtown is talked about in our ordinance, um, you know, in our comprehensive plan, it talks about the properties that front, um, Schallford and the great wagon road. Um, we know, I know that, for instance, this property, um, I think, I believe that's where Ryan Reedies is. It was zoned L D one S, um, L D is a Louisville downtown zoning district. Um, so we wanted to go ahead and, and include those properties because I believe, um, it was included initially in the downtown overlay. A lot of, a lot too, what we tried to do was do our best to, um, in, initially what the preferred land use map looked like, um, in the comprehensive plan. We didn't want to shy away from that T totally, um, and be- because that's kind of what we wanted to generate the whole idea from being that, that mainly is what was coming out of our comprehensive plan. Um, I think with, with the properties around Jennings Road, um, they're supposed to be residential properties. Um, single family homes is, is what they're supposed to be. And then you'll see behind that is, is L B, that's light business. Um, and, and I think there's some established businesses there. But, um, again, I think the planning board just, just mainly thought in keeping with, um, what originally I think was intended to be in the downtown area, um, being those properties that front Schallford and the great wagon road is what their intent was.
Thank you. Any other questions for Stacy?
Just. I just, I, I'd like to, to make a comment. Uh, I don't have the cursor control, but if Stacy, if you will go to the intersection of Jennings and Grapevine and now go straight on the other corner, other corner.
This one?
No, across there, right there.
Okay.
That, that property has come before council before for a rezoning and past councils has said no. And it was to become an office, if you will, uh, type environment, uh, for some, uh, I forget charitable um, uh, organization, uh, for headquarters. And that was denied by council at the time. So there is precedent, if you will, uh, of trying to keep, uh, encroachment of business properties from proceeding on down Louisville Vienna Road.
Mr. Mayor.
Foster, yes, ma'am.
I, I'm, so dovetailing onto what Mr. Franklin is saying. I was on the planning board when consideration was given for the, the area that is yellow in that uh, area where the cursor just was. And that gets to one of my questions for Stacy. So we've had, um, we've had in the past couple of years, what, three, three planners? Um, and from a continuity standpoint, my only question is, I appreciate everything this planning board has done, but just to make sure that some of the previous discussions about downtown do continue with the new, um, um, information for, for today, because I know there was a lot of discussion. So I know my homework I'll be doing is, is looking up some of the planning board minutes from why we, 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 we did spend some time as to why that made some sense at that time. Maybe it no longer applies, but just again, from a continuity standpoint, connecting the dots, I, I think I will be looking at that personally in preparation for the next meeting.
Very good. Any other questions for Stacy? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to open the public hearing at this time. Uh, however, we're not going to accept comments at this point. We will hold those comments until our December 10th meeting. And by that time, everybody who needs to be notified should be notified. Uh, we'll have the continuation until December 10th. Um, and we'll need it with a, um, with a consensus of council, we'll need a motion to continue it and a second and a vote. Is there a motion to continue, please? Dr. Sadler makes the motion. Mr. Smithman makes the second. This is to continue this public hearing until December 10th. Mr. Smithman.
I approve.
Ms. Welch. Oh, I think you're muted, Jane.
Yeah, I had a dog barking. Uh, yes, approved.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Uh, Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
Mr. Franklin.
Uh.
Mayor's eye, that's unanimous. Once again, we will have, uh, our discussion on December 10th. And then, uh, we will take our consideration and then once again, we won't vote on this until our January 14th meeting. And so you'll have opportunity to make comments or written comments after, after the December 10th meeting. And so you'll have opportunity to make comments or written comments after, after the December tenth meeting. Thank you, Ms. Talbert. Ms. Walker, you have folks who want to be part of Lewisville. And you're muted, Ms. Walker.
I can't, unfortunately, I cannot share my screen so that those folks can see the area to be annexed. Hank, do you have the pack it up, or Stacy, either one? We discussed this at the briefing meeting, so council has already seen this area off Dab Road. They've already given me permission to investigate the rest of the information required for that annexation. And at the December meeting, I will bring council up to date on where everything stands. Good, thank you. And if you could point it out, there you go. Thank you Stacy. Hopefully I'll have my, I'm hoping to have my computer fixed so I can share next time.
This, this area, this parcel right here that is not colored purple, that means it is not in corporate limits currently. This parcel right here is what they are requesting annexation for.
Very good, thank you. We'll look forward to welcoming, welcoming them into the town at our next meeting. New business, Ms. Orrell, I believe you have the first item.
Yes, we have ordinance twenty twenty zero four eight. This is amending budget ordinance twenty twenty zero zero one in the amount of three thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars. This is to purchase a stormwater inspection push camera, and I believe Ryan briefed you on this last week.
Any questions?
To approve.
Ms. Franklin?
Motion to approve.
Let me do a quick, let me do a quick question. Any questions for Pam or Ryan? Very good. Mr. Franklin makes the motion?
Second.
Ms. Foster makes the second. Any additional discussion? Mr. Smithman?
Hi.
Ms. Welch?
I pray.
Ms. Hunt?
Hi.
Ms. Foster?
Hi.
Dr. Sadler?
Hi.
Franklin? Mayor's eye, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Our next item is a change order that we briefly discussed at our briefing. Hank, would you take a few minutes and dive into this just a little deeper and, and give us a little more depth or get a little more detail on this particular issue?
Yes, sir. I made some notes to go over and I'm displaying those for you right now. And, and really, I'm going to take you through, as simply put as possible, what we went through as, as far as the process in this matter. Okay, originally, the project of the community center was thought of to be a low-density project. And we weren't going to have any stormwater control measures per se, it was going to be a series of berms and swales. That was based on the engineer's estimate of what would be entailed in this project compared to other similar projects they had seen in the area and what those projects got ultimately permitted for. In that case, there wasn't going to be a stormwater control measure for the community center property. During the permitting process with the N C D U Q, the reviewer did not agree with this assessment, and that's just the luck of the draw or the curse of the draw a lot. You'll end up with someone reviewing your, your stormwater plan and they just will decide that they've got some issues with what you've proposed and they don't agree. In this case, they didn't agree with the, the assessment that we didn't need the stormwater control measure and pretty much came back to us and said, we need to see one. That came back to us in, I think it was late August. So we got into it with the engineer and A D W. We investigated two different scenarios, a bio-retention pond in a sand pit. And then a scope to size the bio-retention pond was expected by estimate by our engineers to be approximately seventy thousand dollars. And the sand pit was estimated to be around five percent less than the bio cell. And that would have been around sixty-three thousand to sixty-six five. Moving forward, it was decided that we go with the bio-retention pond and that the permitting process started, and the process, the permitting process started the second week of September. And at that time, Fairwoods Construction was given the plans and started developing their own cost estimates for construction. The town received its permit for the bio-retention pond on October twelfth. So you're probably talking about, you know, about thirty days later after we got fit, started with the permitting process. Originally, Fairwoods Construction Cost Estimate that came back with, that they submitted for this in early, in the first part of October, they had an expected cost for them to do it at two hundred thousand dollars. Of course, that was well in excess of the engineer's expected cost at seventy thousand dollars. Through a series of negotiations between A D W and Timmons Civil Engineering, the price of the bio, this bio-retention pond work was reduced to one hundred fifty-nine thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars. And a change order was issued on November fourth to the town for approval, and that was just before last week's meeting. So you can see on this timetable from the time that we got the comments back in late August to the time we had to turn around, make the decision, and then do the plans, submit the plans for review or resubmit with the state, then turn around and get the permit issued by the state and have Fairwoods give us a cost estimate, then negotiate that cost estimate. When we got that back on November fourth, that was presented to you last week for consideration. Does anyone have any questions about that timeline? For the benefit of those who would be interested, when I say a bio-retention pond, it's a pond, but it doesn't hold water. It's on a permanent basis, the water comes in, you can see from this picture that I've got displayed for you, towards the backside, this is a small bio-retention pond for development. You gotta see the, the lip edge coming around there, and it's basically a grassy area where the water dumps from the parking lots and the stormwater features into this. It collects into the bio-retention area and then gently seeps back into the soil. So ours is going to be substantially larger than this, but hopefully from the outside, it will appear to be no more than a grassy area. That as opposed to the alternative that we looked at, this is the, an example of the sand pit. And that's probably the same thing from a different angle. So looking at that and the, the fact that this was what we were coming up with, we made the decision to go with the bio-retention pond. We did look at the idea of doing a wet pond, but we went away from that because the size of the wet pond was going to be a lot larger than either one of these storm facilities. It's going to end up being a big pond of water. It was going to be surrounded with a fence that by, based on the type of fence that we're, we would probably end up using, anywhere from fifty, seventy-five to a hundred dollars linear foot. So, it was going to be the cheapest, but not that cheap and probably not a feature that, that anyone would want to see long-term on this piece of property. So again, sand pit, bio-retention pond. Anybody have any questions now?
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
You said the engineer, I think originally had based the estimate on comparability or, or what they thought, not, not, not the estimate, but what they thought could, would be acceptable based on comparability. And I'm sort of, I'm wondering what changed?
Nothing really changed for them. They had to determine the ultimate size of the bio-retention pond. What they based it this on, at the time we made the decision to pull the trigger and move forward, time was of the essence. We had to keep the project on target without delaying the project and costing additional fees to the town for the construction delays. What, how they determined that was establishing the square footage of the bio-retention pond and the sand, the sand pits, going back and taking actual construction costs for similar features in other locations, and then doing an average square foot analysis and then applying that average square foot analysis to our bio-retention to come up with that, that estimate. Unfortunately, I think by the time it gets to the, the contractor, had we had this type of thing where we bid the bio-retention sellout, the bio-retention pond, like you would to multiple bidders, you, we might have been able to get a better price. But in this case, we had the contractor locked in with, with Fairwoods. It became a negotiation between Fairwoods and the town for ultimately what Fairwoods thought they could do this thing for. And unfortunately, there was a lot of discrepancy between their cost estimate, especially when it was at two hundred thousand dollars, and the engineer's expectation when we moved forward, that this would cost around seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah, what I meant by comparability though was, and I appreciate your explanation because that was the next question I had about competitive bid on this thing. But on the comparability thing, I, I guess I'm a little confused about why, when it went to the state, someone sounds like could arbitrarily determine that the, what was, what was projected as the method for addressing stormwater, as in berms and swells, was not appropriate for this project. I'm, I'm a little confused about how an engineer could be that far off. Because it seems to me that if this was comparable to other projects, then there ought to be an appeal process. So if you have, if you get the wrong inspector, I mean, if it's a luck of the draw, that doesn't make any sense to me for these sorts of things. I mean, maybe, I mean, maybe I, you know, because I don't do this, I just don't know, but it doesn't seem to make any sense to me that somebody at the state could arbitrarily determine that what is typically done could not be done in this particular situation. So I don't understand that.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, I'm not familiar with an appeal process with the state. But I know that Adam Carroll of Timmons did have an extensive conversation with the reviewer, and there was just their opinion that this was not going to be fitting into the category of a, a low-density development despite the engineering firm making the assessment from the beginning compared this, this project compared to similar projects. They've observed, observed that they felt like this was a good project to be a low-density project.
Okay, just, this just makes, I mean, just makes no sense to me. Because you're talking about people who, I guess, do this work every day in terms of the engineering firm. And, I mean, I, I don't, I just don't understand that. And if somebody at the state could just be arbitrary in, in their approach in their assessment of this project, if it is truly comparable, and I think an engineer ought to know if this is comparable because they're rendering an opinion about it. I mean, it just, it just makes no sense to me because it just seems to me that if that, if, if it has been the case in the past for similar projects that berms and swells have been sufficient, then there ought to be an appeal process available to, to the town, and, and we shouldn't be burdened with this additional expense. But, but anyway, that's just, you know, I'm ranting about this, but I, but it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Hank, can you, can you stop screen share, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, Ken, it doesn't, it doesn't make much sense. I think, I would suspect maybe there is some type of appeal process available, but they know that you have construction equipment on site, you have graders ready to go, you have a construction schedule that is packed with, with one process after another. And I suspect it probably discourages an appeal process because it stops construction dead. You're right, it doesn't make any sense. Any other questions for Hank? Very good. Ms. Orrell, I believe your business is at hand with the next four, next three ordinances and a resolution.
Right, they all relate to the bio cell that Hank was just describing. First is ordinance twenty twenty zero five two. This is amending budget ordinance twenty twenty zero zero one in the amount of one hundred fifty-nine thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars. This is to transfer funds from the Stormwater Capital Reserve Fund to the Community Center Capital Project Fund to fund the new change order, change order number one.
Any questions for Pam? Entertaining motion. Mr. Smithman makes the motion. You do need a second? I'll make the second. Any additional discussion? Very good. Yes, Ms. Foster?
So, so I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear. So all of these are tied together, and it's all about the change order for this project. And do we have alternative options? I mean, I'm hearing timelines are tight, I'm hearing state is saying this, I'm hearing the possibility for an appeal.
We do, unfortunately, we've had to keep the timeline like it is to keep the schedule going. If, if we are not able to get Fairwoods an answer to move forward and we delay, it will cost the project in time and money.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before we take the vote on the first one, I'd just like to ask one question of Hank.
Yes, sir.
The, I, I think what you're saying that we're doing here with the bio cell is similar to what the Baptist building on Schallford has done with their stormwater. And that they have actually planted some trees and maybe some pampas grass and things of that nature inside the cell. So I would hope that if we go with this bio cell, that I'm sure it's going to be much larger than the one that's located along Schallford Road, but that we would have some, I hate to use the word amenities, but instead of, the one you showed us in the pictures a minute ago was just gravel and grass.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, it could be enhanced some to, to look a little bit better.
Here's, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that the drugstore has a couple of bio cells too, don't they?
Yes, they do. They're, they're, theirs are more simplistic than
Yeah, they're a little bit like the examples I've shown you.
But I feel, I feel like the one beside the, the, the Baptist hospital building looks, looks nice. The other, other two you're speaking of at the pharmacy are just simplistic, grass holes sort of like.
Ms. Hunt?
Sure, a couple of questions, and I think I asked this last week, but I did not write it down, so that means it didn't go into my memory. Pam, can you tell me what the balance is going to be in that stormwater fund once we, if we end up taking out the one fifty-nine?
It'll be about one, I'm, I'm sorry, four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, all right. And then I just want to kind of make a comment in regards to this project. And I'm also kind of disappointed in the fact that we are spending an additional seventy thousand dollars or something that was not done appropriately from the beginning. So I just want that to kind of go on record, and whatever we need to do moving forward to ensure that Fairwood has got great communication, that we're meeting with the state, whatever needs to happen, I think that we should make sure that that's happening. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I didn't hear what the cost of a retention pond would be. I understood, I heard that, you know, it was, it was thought about, but
We didn't have an exact figure for that. We, we know that it would have been the cheapest alternative, but we were trying to take away from that because of the potential liability issue and the fact that it would have been a large pond in that draw. They also told me that because of the lay of the land and the way that the, the draw comes and, and water flows through the property, we would probably have gotten into engaging into a dam building across that draw to, in, in order to impound the, the proper amount of water. So we felt like something that wasn't going to hold water on a twenty-four seven basis and then could also be done without fencing and other things of that nature probably was the way to go, but we did not investigate fully the cost of the a wet pond, all, but we do know that it probably was the cheapest way to go.
Ms. Welch?
Yes, am I to assume if we delayed the project to appeal this, that we would actually incur a lot more expenses because of the timeline of
That, that is the implication.
Is there any way we can appeal it after the fact?
Ma'am, I'm not even sure that this is appealable. I don't know enough about that. In fact, I think Ryan would have more knowledge about that time than me, but I don't know that it is appealable. And I couldn't tell you that if we went down that road and went through any type of appeal process, that we would be granted any kind of avenue to make an appeal, and I couldn't tell you the, the success of that appeal as well.
And Ryan, your, your opinion?
I'm, I'm unaware of the appeal process. This kind of just got thrown on us, and I apologize for not knowing that answer.
Mayor.
Ms. Hunt, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I I hate to belabor this topic, but I think it's important. I mean, because we're talking about a matter of one hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars. I understand we have a very healthy stormwater reserve fund, and I am grateful that we've got, I mean, I think that we're blessed that we have that as a town. What else are we expecting that's going to need to come out of that? And maybe someone can talk to us about that. I know we've got the stormwater audit and these types of things that are going on, but what can we expect? Are we going to end up depleting that?
We will at one point, Ms. Hunt, the only other thing that I know that I've been kind of earmarking on this is that we've got this work done on a bio I'm sorry, a regional stormwater pond for it. The Stan Tech expected cost of that was maybe four hundred fifty thousand dollars or so was in that range, and that included, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, our estimates on what it would take to acquire the properties necessary for the construction of that pond. This is the type of thing that it hit our cap and we had kept the the cap has, and Pam can do a better job of explaining it. This was set up not to exceed a certain balance, and we hit that balance this year. But up until this point, we've been contributing ninety thousand dollars a year into that capital reserve. As we move forward with a regional pond and we start going and we're negotiating with property owners, the acquisition of the property to to build this regional pond, we're going to start tapping and drawing down on this the stormwater pond reserve as well. And then at the same time, while we're drawing down on it, we're going to probably end up contributing back to it, just like we have been in years past before we capped it out on it. So long answer to your question is, yes, we do have an identified project and it is the regional pond. The estimated cost, and again, I hate to say estimated because that's where we we started with with the engineering estimates, is that anytime you start a project, you have what is estimated it's going to cost. And then you have what it actually costs when you hit the hit the road and start running with it. So that's.
And any opportunity for us to go get money from the state to retain, I mean, on stormwater, is there any?
I think it's possible. I know that Ryan is talking about being able to get some monies for assistances with enhancing the 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 bio retention cell when we're at the pond, when we get down to the community center, some of that money being available to pretty it up. I'm not sure what may be available for a regional pond, but I'm sure there's probably something out there we can go pursue.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Ms. Foster.
Yeah, just two comments. So this is looping back to the discussion about a retention pond instead. Even if something is less expensive, it's my understanding, I'm no expert, but I thought I had read or heard talking to an architect friend of mine who does some work in another part of the state for school systems, that the bio cell is much more in keeping with best practices currently. Is is that a reasonable?
That that is the case, and I will stand and let Ryan correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but I believe our ordinances are built around encouraging the stormwater features to be bio retention.
Yep, okay.
And because that is the preferred for the town as opposed to the wet ponds in the sand pits.
Yes, okay. So that was number one. Number two is, so the lighting, we have discussed a while, and now this, and what I've heard consistently is we need to have these decisions because we've got a tight timeline, and I think it's been built into the contract that the community center will be done by a certain time. Is that is that correct?
That's correct.
So with all due respect, I mean, we, you know, we we love that our staff is tight and lean and productive. This, what to Melissa's point, what can we anticipate? Is there a, there's not a full time project manager on our side who's looking at this? All of you have other responsibilities. Who who, how is this project being managed and who's responsible to make sure and anticipate, say, okay, wait a minute, this could go wrong, etc., because things are going to happen.
We do have that. We have a contract with ADW for Bob Moran to be a construction administrator that works with us. He works with Ryan and myself on issues and trying to foresee those as they move forward.
So that person is responsible for managing and driving this and seeing that those deadlines are hit, timelines are hit, and anticipating what could go wrong. So back to Melissa's point, if Bob's got some ideas about what he's seeing down the road that might might go wrong, we'd certainly like to be proactive in knowing that.
Well, I think that's the case. I mean, we had just had a a meeting onsite this week, early in the week, and we talked about issues coming to head and things that need to be dealt with, and we dealt with the most immediate. And then we also dealt with projects that were were issues that may not be burning down the house at the moment, but will be at some point and trying to take a proactive approach to having having to deal with them and get them taken care of in an expedited manner, but with due consideration.
Yeah, Jim, there's going to be, there's one immediate issue that's coming up here in the next week or so, and I think David was onsite, I was onsite, staff was onsite, Jane, we're going to have to talk about this as our as our community center group. But the when they began to do the excavation for the the parking circle, when they cut into the bank, they discovered they were beginning to cut into the root system of the oak tree. And so they stopped at that point and they said, okay, we've got to come up with some options on this. And so I think the the surveyors are, I'm not sure they're out there this week, but they were supposed to be out there this week. And early next week, we'll have the the everything staked out so we know exactly where it goes. And they will know what options are available to us. I mean, it may be that the only option or the best option is to just chop down the tree. I hate for us to do that, but that that's one of the options to consider. So we'll be that that's one we know that is coming. Fortunately, we also don't have to go back to the state for any other approvals with the exception of our entrance, and that's DOT. And we're we're pretty good, we're in pretty good terms with the local DOT, so we we feel not as anxious about that as we did about this. Any other questions or comments?
I I don't want to belabor this much longer, but you know, when I hear best practices raised, it it makes me curious. Because I wonder if the state would approve a sand pit or they would approve retention pond. It suggests to me that those are acceptable means for dealing with a with a particular problem. And and if this if this does, I guess that leads to the question, then does the state expect or anticipate the application of best practices or just a solution?
In our case, a solution.
Okay, so that means that, I mean, other than the press of time and other than the potential complexity of of building a retention pond, there's no reason it would not be approved by the state.
There was one aspect that I neglected to say regarding the retention pond. If we wanted to investigate that, there would have been further engineering studies that would have to have been conducted on the soil acceptability for retention pond. So that would have had additional implications as far as playing and design and time.
I understand. I mean, all of this stuff is we're trapped in a timeline on any of these things. But I I just want to be clear about it, just so that I understand going forward when we're talking about it, so you would not, a recommendation would not be brought to us unless, for instance, it's a quote best practice. I mean, if that's what we anticipate as our standard, then we ought not ever get any recommendation other than a best practice, and that means doesn't matter what the cost is.
Good point.
Very good. Any additional discussion or questions? I believe we're.
All questions.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor. The question's been called. Mr. Smithman. Is that an I? David, you're muted. You're still muted. There we go, David.
Aye.
Very good. Ms. Walsh.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Hunt.
No.
Mr. Franklin.
Reluctantly.
Dr. Sadler.
No.
Mayor's eye, that is five two with Ms. Hunt and Dr. Sadler in opposition. Thank you very much for that discussion. Pam, the next item is yours.
Yes, next I have ordinance twenty twenty zero five three. This is amending the cap, Community Center Capital Project Ordinance twenty nineteen zero two three in the amount of one hundred fifty nine thousand four hundred thirty seven dollars. This basically increases the budget for the community center.
Any questions for Pam?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. We need a second, ladies and gentlemen. Ms. Foster makes the second. Any additional discussion? Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Hunt.
No.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin. Mayor's eye, it is six one with Ms. Hunt in opposition. Third item, Pam, please.
The third item, just to let you know, anytime you do any sort of activity within a capital reserve fund or have any activity, it must be documented or amended. There must be an amendment to the capital reserve. So basically, this is a a housekeeping issue. But it's ordinance twenty twenty zero five four, amending the municipal stormwater capital reserve fund in the amount of one hundred fifty nine thousand four hundred thirty seven dollars to transfer the funds to the Community Center Capital Project Fund for the construction of the bio cell.
Very good. Any questions for Pam? Ms. Foster, was that a motion? Ms. Foster makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any discussion? Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Hunt.
No.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin. Mayor's eye, it is six one with Ms. Hunt in opposition. Next one, Pam, please. I believe that's our resolution.
Yeah, lastly, resolution twenty twenty zero seven five, accepting change order number one for the new Mary Alice Warren Community Center in the amount of one hundred fifty nine thousand four hundred thirty seven dollars to build the bio cell stormwater pond or bio cell stormwater feature and authorizing the town manager to approve the change order with Fairwood Construction.
Any questions for Pam? Entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Ms. Welch makes the motion. Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Another reluctant aye.
Ms. Hunt.
No.
Dr. Sadler.
No.
Mr. Franklin.
I'm going to vote aye on this one. I hate to, but.
Mayor's eye, that is a five two vote with Ms. Hunt and Dr. Sadler in opposition with their comments duly noted in our record. Very good. Thank you, folks. Ryan, do you want to give us just a quick recap on the stormwater detention system cleanup?
Sure, we've got, we currently have a underground retention center or detention center behind the Town Hall Annex that was installed in it's kind of vague, either ninety nine or two thousand. It has not been maintained to date. It needs to be vacuumed out. And we have a contract ready to be signed with a with a contractor to do that work. We're also going to have to use a use some water from a hydrant. So some of this, some of this money, some of this money is for the contractor. There's a small portion that's going to be put aside for water usage from a hydrant. Are there any questions?
If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll I'll make the motion, but I want to make a comment while I'm doing that, that when this system went in, I was on council. Again, Ryan, I don't remember the year, but you're right in estimating ninety nine to two thousand one timeframe. I remember that it cost us back in those days, two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put this system in in order to be able to put the parking lot over the top to have parking for the annex and to also be able to accommodate what we had hoped at that time would be a future library in Lewisville at the town had went out and actually purchased that site and ended up donating that to the county in order to get the library built where it is currently at. The system has been in underground for at least twenty two years and seems to me, like I say, that I know in my mind, I that it was above two hundred, it may be up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So this eighteen thousand dollars is way less than ten percent for maintenance of the system. So I wholeheartedly support this. I'm just concerned that when it comes to safety, since there are going to be some confined space entry that that it be taken very seriously, and if necessary, get the right folks to to consult with you on that. Because anytime you have an incident involving confined space, it it most of the time has tragic implications and so forth. So get get our fire chief there, do a very good pre plan when this project goes forward. But with all that said, I make the motion to approve this contract. It's.
Or the budget amendments. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself.
Mr. Franklin makes a motion. Dr. Sadler makes a second. Somebody's speaker is on, we're getting some feedback someplace. Any further discussion? Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Prue.
Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin.
Mayor.
We didn't hear you. Very good. Mayor's eye, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Alrighty, Pam, you have the next item, and that's awarding a contract.
Right, it's resolution twenty twenty zero seven six, awarding the contract to vacuum the underground stormwater detention system at the Town Hall Annex to Industrial Vacuum Services Incorporated of Pineville, North Carolina, in the amount not to exceed sixteen thousand three hundred dollars.
Any questions for Pam? We'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Dr. Sadler makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any additional discussion? Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin. Mayor's eye, that is unanimous. Thank you. Upcoming events at Shallowford Square, this should be a very short.
It is. The only thing I've got to discuss right now is that the town offices will be closed on Thursday, the twenty sixth and Friday, the twenty seventh, observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Moving forward to December, we will end up having a virtual tree lighting ceremony on December fourth, that's a Friday. That's it.
Let me ask a quick question for council members. What we're what we're what Stacy is planning, what we're trying to do is at least spread a little cheer in a time when we usually get together and have a great time talking with each other and celebrating. We will observe social distancing, we'll observe masks, we'll observe all of the things that hopefully will protect us all. This event will not have publican attendance and will be, will have plenty of notice in advance saying that, that I'd like to see if there's any council member who doesn't who doesn't think they may be there or would like or would attend that.
What's the date again?
December fourth, Ken. At seven o'clock. And Stacy came up with the idea today, and I think it's a real fun one, is at that same time, we'll do a quick fifteen second snippet with each council member wishing our residents happy holidays, and that'll be wrapped into a nice little package and put on TV six. Very good. Then we'll count on all your, we'll plan on all your shining faces or shining masks or whatever it is we we will shine during that period of time. Thank you very much. Hank, will you go with us, please, the items that we approved at briefing?
Yes, first, we had approved Resolution two zero two zero zero seven three, directing the clerk to investigate the annexation petition for an area contiguous to the town boundary. Next, we approved ordinance two zero two zero zero five one, amending budget ordinance two zero two zero 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 one in an amount of two thousand nine hundred twenty five dollars to contract with Matt's seasonal decor to purchase and install holiday decorations to the outside of Town Hall. We discussed and approved the recommendation. We discussed and approved the recommendations for the use of Facebook for our virtual meetings as we move forward. And then we also discussed meeting times under COVID conditions for the twenty twenty one calendar. We also discussed the Lewisville Clemens Chamber Bike Event that is anticipated to come sometime in the spring. And then we also went through the consideration date for two public hearings set for December third, twenty twenty, six o'clock PM. And that concludes the business that we took care of last week.
Thank you, Hank. Ladies and gentlemen, we, at our briefing meetings, which occur the first Thursday of every month, we find it important on occasion to take some actions. We'd like to report those actions out at this meeting and so that you know what we were doing and and can keep abreast of the activities of your town council. We are now at the second opportunity for public comment. Stacy, if you'll put up our sign there, thank you very much. Again, the easiest way to get there is to go to lewisville NC dot net, click on residents, click on events calendars and click on November twelfth. That'll give you a link to our Zoom or you can call the number that's on your screen, six four six five five eight eight six five six. Hank, do we have anybody in the queue?
No, sir.
Very good. We'll give another another second or two. My cat would like to speak if there's no objections. Please, please, we appreciate you. Thank you very much. Very good. With that, we'll close the second public forum. Council members? Any thoughts before we adjourn? Ms. Ms. Welch?
Yes, I just wanted to really wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving and especially our constituents as well and certainly be safe out there. It's going to be difficult this time because so few of us can actually get together safely. But enjoy the holiday and look forward to everybody coming back safely.
Thank you, Jane. I'm sure the council shares your your comments. Anyone else? Ms. Foster?
This cat has something to say. So Hank, Hank, Mayor, does anybody want to address the executive order by the governor and how that's impacting meetings?
Yes, and I'm going to give Stacy an opportunity to discuss the decision that we made this week regarding the planning board meeting next week. But obviously, I think we all know at this point that the state has gone backwards for inside meetings from twenty five back to ten. So that kind of puts, at least for the time being, the question about what we need to be doing in the immediate future for our own town council meetings at at rest. And we'll just see where we move forward from there. Stacy and I did discuss what we were planning to do with the planning board for the next, for next week on the eighteenth. And I'm not going to steal her thunder. I'm going to let her speak to this and what we've decided and what has transpired to date with communication to planning board and the public. Go ahead, Stacy.
Thank you, Hank. In light of the the new executive order with the in-person gatherings number being lowered once again to ten people instead of the twenty five, we have made the decision to have the November eighteenth planning board meeting virtually. We will not hold an in-person meeting. We didn't think that it was the best route to go with that executive order and also with the the spike in numbers and everything like that. So that that meeting will not be held in person. As of right now, there is no in-person meeting scheduled for for the planning board. They they will be held virtually. I did talk to Junie today and all the avenues of where that has been advertised. The Facebook event that Hank was talking about, I believe, website, tho- those areas has been updated to let the public know that it is not going to be in person. It's only going to be virtual. I have let the developer know for the reason for the in-person meeting. And he is also willing to meet virtually. And then I have also let the planning board know that that will be a virtual meeting and not in person as well.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Thank you, Ms. Talbert. That's a great segue for information I sent to you today. Unfortunately, we're not, we're not going in the right direction. The last five days, we've had new cases exceeding a hundred. Today, we had a hundred and seventy eight. It is, it is, it is very disheartening to know that we're not, we're not getting around the corner on this thing. If it's, if it was a matter of more testing, that would be one thing. But our our number of cases or percentage of cases that are testing positive, where we were three or four months ago, we were around five percent. Today, we are around twelve percent. So it's, it's, it's very disconcerting to all of us. And it's a reminder that we really do need to do everything we can to stay safe. Tomorrow, there will be a free COVID nineteen testing performed by the county health department. That will be at Shaliford Square from twelve till three. We put that information up on our social media and 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 are alerting folks and the, as well, the county health department has done some some advertising on that as well.
They're offering flu shots there as well this time?
That's a really good question, Ms. Foster. I do not know the answer to that.
They did last time.
I would say probably because they did it last time.
The only thing that I would mention is last time, they did not have the flu shots for individuals over the age of sixty five. And I don't know if they'll have that available this time or not. Last time, they told me you'd have to go to the health department to get a flu shot if you were wanting that stronger flu, stronger vaccine. So anyway.
Free of charge. Councilmember Sadler, if you might, I got that extra flu shot for those of certain age here in town at our Walgreens. So they they do have it there. You don't have to go to your doctor's office or anywhere else. You can get it at your pharmacy.
I believe Keith at Louisville Pharmacy also has the, not that any of us need the shot that's over sixty five, but those who do can procure it there. Mr. Smithman?
One other way to get tested and also be a positive to the community is like Councilman Franklin does and I did yesterday, which is if you donate blood, they will test your blood at the same time. So it's like a two for one deal.
Thank you, Ms. Smithman. You you reinforced Mr. Franklin's, I gave today's sign, which he he held up a little earlier. Very good. Council members, any additional comments?
I have a question. Do we have any veterans on this Zoom call?
I'm a veteran.
I thought so.
Thank you, Ken.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
And in fact, you were you were reserved for thirty years?
No, I was active duty for three years and the reserves for just over twenty four years.
Very good. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Very good. Any any additional comments this evening, council members?
I'll just reiterate what David said. Folks, even though we're practicing social distancing, don't mean that has to be a social disconnect. Blood is a constant need. Please give blood if you're able to give blood. And I was looking at the bottom of the new little stickers that the Red Cross gives out. It says, I'm given the gift of life. Sixty four years ago today, my parents gave me the gift of life. So I was able to do that and hopefully that will give somebody else an opportunity to continue their life.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Fred.
Very good, Fred.
Now you're older than I am.
Hey, you don't need that extra flu shot yet.
Yeah, they wouldn't give it to me this year.
Happy birthday, Fred. Good for you.
Yeah, one more year.
As always, thanks to the staff for everything they do.
Absolutely.
Ladies and gentlemen, any more comments this evening? With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Smith, next the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any further discussion? Mr. Smithman?
Good night, all.
Ms. Welch?
Good night.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Good night.
Dr. Sadler?
Good night.
Mr. Franklin?
I want to go eat. Good night.
Mayor is also a good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your patience. I hope you observed in tonight's discussion that we can't have serious discussion. Well, we always have serious discussions, but we can have a some discussions even more serious. We can disagree, but as Dr. Sadler often says, we can do it without being disagreeable and respecting each other's opinion. Thank you, council members. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Be safe.